Your taxes, uh.
I didn't think that.
If it would, if it would multiply by four, I'd be amenable to looking at it, but I really doubt that there's gonna be a 400% increase in your assessed value of that, of that building. I'm, I'm making a stab at that, but I, I'm just guessing that I, we can look and see where it's assessed at now, but I doubt that it's gonna be four X.
Mr. Tetter.
Go ahead.
Talk about the finances. We're talking about going from a sales tax of nine and a half to eleven, and so the difference between nine and a half and eleven would go to Mr. Over, Over, Over you?
Over Hugh. Um, yes, it would be rebated ta, back to the, to the owner, yes.
And he mentioned twenty-five thousand or thirty thousand. Is that over the course of twenty-two years, or is that just a one-year, um, is that a one-year amount, or, or don't we know?
It depends what the sales would be on the sales taxable, um, things in the property, his business sells, you know, boxes, tape, so they would collect sales tax on things of that nature, the Family Dollar, any other tenants that he was able to retain in there.
I think it'd also be important to note that the, the sales tax, the, that difference doesn't go straight to the developer and can only be applied to certain eligible expenses under the CID Act. Under the CID Act, there's a broad range of expenses that are eligible for CID reimbursement, but, you know, for example, it doesn't go to the developer buying the new BMW for themselves or whatever, the developer in order to submit, you know, in order to get to that sales tax has to submit expenses to the city, those have to be certified as being eligible expenses.
So if those expenses, um, you know, if it didn't, if his expenses didn't exceed, didn't, you know, weren't greater, were somewhat less than the one and a half percent increase, would those come to the city?
Then that would, then, then, but it's probably stay in the CID fund.
Okay.
Through the term until all the expenses are you.
All right.
Are, are paid, but if, for example, the CID fund, um, is doing so well that it, you know, you have a lot more money than is needed to pay the eligible expenses for, and those money will come back to the general fund.
Most likely what would happen, and we did this with our hotels in Zekford, is the amount of investment is far gonna exceed the CID revenues. I have a binder from, you know, some of the other projects with six million dollars worth of receipts and CID revenue coming in at ten thousand a month. So you're gonna, you're gonna hit the cap, or the, the years before you hit, uh, the cap on expenses, CID eligible expenses.
Now, Mr. Over Hugh, you could've mentioned if you're looking at like fifteen to twenty-five thousand dollars for, uh, making the facade much not, an extra fifteen to twenty-five thousand, is that, did I hear that correctly?
Yeah, it's gonna be, we estimate twenty to twenty-five probably.
Do we, don't we have a facade improvement program that they can make application for?
Yes, they've made application for that as well.
Okay, it's over and above what we're, uh, the city is, uh, potentially giving you for the facade, we have a facade improvement program.
I think it's fifteen thousand is the cap on that. Fifteen for spending thirty on a multi-tenant location.
Okay. So you have made application for that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and has it been granted yet or not, or just going through the process?
Um, we're just finalizing the invoices.
Okay, okay, thank you, just, okay.
I've got a question.
Go ahead.
This is for our attorney. The, uh, he stated that Topeka was considering allowing storage units to, uh, tax, whereas they are, are not now. Could this CID be brought back in if this tax did pass in a year?
I, I guess I wasn't following that, that part of the conversation. I mean, I, I wasn't aware that rentals on storage units were, uh, taxable, were, uh, subject to the retail sales tax. That's something I haven't looked into. I mean, the CID is applied to whatever sales are, um, taxable, uh, are, are subject to the retail sales tax.
Right.
And those, those can change depending on what the legislature does here after year.
My question is, if we didn't grant it this time, and they did go ahead and pass it where they can tax, where they, they are taxing now, could we make it a CID district?
You could always create the CID. The question would be at that what point, you know, you can't go so far back in time to capture expenses that've always been incurred. Um, but, you know, you could certainly, um, create a CID, yeah, at any time you wanted. The question would be whether there are retail sales sufficient to.
Right.
To generate the, uh, the income necessary to, whatever the expenses might be. If the frontage is already done, uh, no, I'm probably gonna tell you that, you know, that's, that's not how, uh, that, that's not gonna be, that's not, not really gonna fly to capture those types of expenses that you've already done.
Right.
Last year or two years ago.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tetter, when we, uh, do a public hearing, are we looking at the next?
Um, if you expressed your initial conditional support for the project, then we would schedule it, um.
There's some notification requirements, some meetings you have to do.
Whether we support it or not, uh, a, a public hearing can be.
If, if the applicant chooses to go.
Yeah. Do, uh, can, I don't know that you have to state that right here, or does he have to state right now, I mean, at some point?
No, he could just.
Request a public hearing and you, you and your staff together and, uh, 'cause we can't take any action on this until there is. My, my position still remains, if you, if affected your business, that you were charging sales tax on the main part of your business, I know if you sell a box or some, a box of tape or something, uh, that will be sales tax, but the main part of your business are your rental units. If that, those were sale ta, uh, if they, if you charged sales tax on that, sales tax applied, and then you raised it one and a half percent, I'd be all for it because that is something you're telling your customers, yes, my sales tax higher, but I've got a better product, and they make their choice. Now, the current tenants and the customers there aren't really given a choice, uh, it's just, you know, it's now, instead of nine and a half percent, it's now eleven percent. Uh, but, we can't make that decision. We, if you request a public hearing, then we'll go into that discussion. You may have more information break to the table. You may bring the management from Family Dollar in, and they'll say they're one hundred percent supportive because they're gonna get more information, more product out, or, uh, better facade, but, uh, at this point, we can't do anything, or we're not gonna do anything. But it's up to you whether you wanna request a public hearing or not.
I got a question for the attorney. Is there any way to set up an incentive district through the rental of storage units with the one and a half percent?
Not quite sure I understand the question. I mean, you know, you can create, you know, CID district that is through the sales tax, you can create a, a tax agreement financing district, um, but I'm not aware of, of anything specifically toward, for rental units, um, that you create a, a certain district that is finance improvements.
Could he, if you're familiar with the building at Twenty Glen Spruce?
Yeah.
Let's say the frontage is three hundred feet long, I, I'm suspecting you own two hundred feet of it, another, I mean, you own it all, but two hundred feet is storage units, and another hundred feet to the east is, are these two, a couple retail outlets. Could they do a CID for those first two hundred feet only, so the boxes and Scotch tape that he sells?
I'd have to take a look at that, I don't remember. I think there were some changes recently as to the extent to which you can use CID proceeds outside of CID district. You know, for example, I know that that has been allowed in some areas where you make infrastructure improvements to streets that aren't technically within the district itself, that there is a little bit of room there. I don't remember off the top of my head how far you can do, but I, I, I think it kinda goes to that more, but if you wanna include, you know, the, the, another type of commercial building like that, they should generally be in the district, but you don't need to be, but as long as it's in the district, I mean, you don't need to, um, you're not legally required to, you, to, to not make improvements to an area just because that one area isn't generating a sales tax. You can use, if sales tax is generated from here, but you're doing a whole plant, that is certainly legal to do it that way.
Okay. Well, Mr. Over Hugh, uh, obviously, I think we need to be more educated on this too, and the city attorney's gonna have some things, and I think that you're probably gonna request a public hearing, uh, so, uh, this thing isn't finished, and Commissioner Bush.
I just have, uh, how many retail outlets are out there right now besides Family Dollar? Or are there one or?
Just two.
Just two?
Two.
Play bounce and jump and.
Okay, um, well, between now and when we have the public hearing, if we could make some assumptions in terms of like, what we think the, uh, you know, the, the amount that would be coming in from sales taxes.
That, that's, that's up to the commission to request from the developer a pro, a pro forma.
Okay.
Um, we would not make those kind of estimates on our side, that's not appropriate.
So generally, you would have the applicant, uh, provide a feasibility study on, on that.
And Family Dollar, man, even though Family Dollar is a renter, Mr. Over Hugh, Family Dollar is not, it's not incumbent upon Family Dollar to give you their annual sales. I, I've got a, I bet I can make an estimate plus or minus ten percent just based on what little I know of retail, what it brings in. I have no idea on play bounce and jump, but I can tell you what a retail place probably does, but if they're willing to give it to you, I think that'd be more information. If they're not willing to do it, you can't, you can't bend their arm.
What is the best practice? I mean, what would, what would be the best practice with respect to what Mr. Over you?
I hate, I hate to be overly general, but normally what you get in with an incentive is, um, a dollar for, dollar cost for development, dollars available for the project, and then that gap, and then the pro forma usually shows the incentive's ability to fill that gap.
Right.
And the incentive has to be based on, well, then you'll vet the, the, the pro forma, um, so that's, that's normally an incentive.
And he's, you're essentially citing the statute. I mean, the statute says that you come down, you say, good description of the project, description of the cost of the project, and description of the financing of the project. So you say, it's got, our costs are here, and we've got this much in equity, this much in private loans, and this much in C, anticipated CID, and that's how you get to a point, and that, that's when you would make the but-for analysis as to whether but for this type of incentive is the project feasible or not.
That's a lot of work on your part, but I think it's the best way to go in terms of us being able to, you know, make, make a, a good decision for, for the community and, uh, for you and the other retail outlets at that particular location. And I, I'm all for improving the appearance and the image of the city, so from that standpoint, it's good, but we gotta look at the, the numbers, and I think that that would be a good, a good approach. Sounds like a best practice, and so that, those are my comments on this particular issue, Mr. Merritt.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Over Hugh, I think you know where you stand.
Sure. I appreciate you having me.
Uh, and my recommendation to you, if you can bring the management, owners of those retail establishments, and come to us and say, we're definitely in favor of this because we know it'll increase our, beautify our shores, and we think it'll draw more customers, I could be swayed by that argument.
Sure. Well, good work, and soon we come up with.
I agree with that.
Yeah. So I'm sure you'll deal with Mr. Tetter and talk some more.
Sounds good.
Thanks for coming up from Swinfield.
Thanks for having me.
Have a nice drive home.
Thank you.
Next item is presentation, two thousand nineteen budget, Mr. Kramer.
Mr. Mayor and Commission, tonight I will, uh, present an overview of the city manager's recommended two thousand nineteen, uh, operating budget. As everybody knows, starting tomorrow, one o'clock, we'll go into detailed budget meetings, um, but tonight I'll provide you an overview of what you'll see over the next two days. So a quick budget overview, uh, you'll have before you tomorrow, and you have before you, uh, tonight, a balanced budget. The city-supported mill remains flat. There is no millage increase for city-supported, uh, funds. The library has requested a point three eight five millage increase for the library employee benefit fund for the homeowner in the, in town of a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house that, uh, equates to about fifty-five cents a month. Um, I wanna speak briefly about how the library mill works, uh, for, for everybody here tonight, and then everybody watching at home. By ordinance, the city levies for the library three point seven five mills for operations. That is set, that's what we levy every year. In addition to that, we levy, um, an amount to pay for library employees' benefits. That's health insurance, that's capers, that's workers' comp, that's, uh, FICA, that's everything that goes into library employee benefits. Over the last couple years, three or four years, the library had, um, accumulated a balance in their employee benefits fund, and they had come to the commission each of the last couple years saying, our expenses are exceeding what we're getting, and the commission's message each year was, use your reserves, and they've done that over the last three years. They are at the point now, we're going into nineteen, their budgeted expenses exceed their revenues, and there are no reserves available to cover those costs. So why is it, is it such a large amount, point three eight five mills, which relatively is a large amount for their small, uh, small fund? Three employees of theirs, out of their twenty-one employees, twenty-one, twenty-one employees have gone from no insurance to insurance. They're adding an employee, and so when you do that, you have to budget for full health insurance. When your budget's small, less than a mill over the last three years, changes like that would require a millage increase. City staff has vetted this, uh, pretty thoroughly, and we are comfortable with the library's request, so that would be an increase to the library's, uh, mill for employee benefit fund.
And that point three eight five equates to about seventy-seven thousand dollars, seven, seven to eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah, about that, yeah. Um, and again, fifty-five cents a month, um, for the homeowner who has a, uh, fi, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house. We had, uh, two, two other, uh, changes, changes in legal service costs, and then we had a change associated with how the county charges us to house inmates. Um, again, we, uh, are in support of this change from the county. How they did it before is if we brought somebody to the county, they would prorate via, uh, time that they were in the jail, so if they were there for an hour and, and got out, they would prorate their daily charge. Um, they have gone away from that, and if you go, you're charged today, whether you're there an hour or twenty-four hours. Um, it, it is a, uh, acknowledged hassle for them to have, had to have done that. It still requires a lot more service than just holding somebody for an hour, so that increases our housing inmate cost about fifty thousand dollars.
So if you're there, you might as well stay for lunch.
You might as well have your, uh, have your meal, 'cause we're paying for it. Uh, I put together this slide, um, before I get into expenses and revenues here, to show what the, what somebody who has a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house with the current city-supported mill rate of twenty-six point seven six eight, that doesn't include the library, but just the, just the mill rate that, that the city collects, what you end up paying for the entire year to the city is four hundred and sixty-one dollars and seventy-five cents. That equates to thirty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents a month that the homeowner or property owner of a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home would pay. And what do you get for thirty-eight, forty-eight? You get police protection, snow removal, street repair, use of the community center, animal control, fire protection, code enforcement, uh, use of parks, playgrounds, and pools. Obviously, there's small charges for the community center and pools, um, but those are greatly reduced. Uh, capital improvements that are funded out of that, and of course, health and safety inspections, uh, the fire department does on restaurants, uh, daycares and other type facilities. Uh, so, thought that was important to show that I, I think for thirty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents a month, it's a pretty good deal for the amount of services that the city offers, and the level of services that the city offers. Budget development considerations. We have budgeted in this the addition of a mid-year addition of a community development director to reassume housing authority duties and to work on directed community improvement projects and programs. We had this position up until, uh, mid-two thousand thirteen into two thousand fourteen, and it was not filled when we had somebody leave, and because at that time, uh, the city was using reserves to balance the budget, that was, uh, as we were still recovering from the recession. So what we did was, uh, we got rid of a few, uh, services, but we farmed out the duties of that, that director. I took the housing authority, uh, the city planner took code enforcement, um, we, we, sort of collectively, uh, went on and were able to function. What we have lost is the ability to have anybody in the city who can be the point person on community initiatives. Um, we had, uh, our city planner steps in on the transportation issue that we did last year. Um, Taylor and I step in, uh, for things like homelessness, uh, issues and mental health issues. Sister Vicki's putting together a workforce on that, um, so we don't have one collective person. Um, I won't go on too long, um, but also the city planner, um, as development, has increased in the city. The city planner, who staffs the planning commission, the board of zoning appeals, also oversees all of code enforcement, the community development block grant, um, all while acting as the, as the city planner. In two thousand twenty, we're gonna be required to redo our comprehensive tenure plan, um, and I don't believe that if we go forward with the rental, uh, inspection program, which is a whole nother program that would go into that office, that it's feasible for the city planner to be able to, uh, fulfill all those duties. The reason I said it at mid-year is because we expect to have our first rental inspection program study session in August. If the commission decides not to do that, um, if they decide to, uh, that the status quo is fine, we don't have to fill that position. If they decide to go forward with that, we probably wouldn't have anything in place until middle to end of next year anyway, so that's why we would bring somebody onboard mid-year. Funding of court ordered nuisance abatement in a way that brings more expedient relief to neighborhoods, that's something that we added this year, something that was prominent in city commission goals, uh, we wanna make our community look better, even if we can do, uh, get that accomplished in small ways. Last year, we added thirty thousand dollars for city-funded of, uh, housing demolition. This would be ten thousand dollars for when the judge gives the city the okay to abate the worst of the worst code violations junk that apply, uh, um, we don't have funding to do that, so a lot of times the judge will, uh, uh, authorize the city to clean junk out of a, out of a yard or an alley or something like that, we don't have funding. This sets the, sets up a fund that we'd be able to do ten to fifteen, maybe even twenty of those projects. Addressing the city, uh, commission goals, um, was thought about, uh, throughout this process. Implementing a portion of the commissioned employee classification and compensation study, um, we've talked about this, uh, for about a year now. This, it's been about twenty years since the city looked at how we classify employees and also how we compensate employees. That study's about seventy-five percent done, it will not be complete by the time the budget's over, so we took, we decreased the employee raise pool a little bit and set aside, um, that money to then implement some of these classifications, uh, changes that could happen in the police department, fire department, public works, parks, anywhere. We won't know till we get that, that study. Employee health, welfare, retirement expenses, you'll see when we get to expenses, uh, for this year, how a lot of those are mandated by the state, um, and we, and our, uh, non-mandatory, uh, our mandatory, uh, increases. And we also have a new budget line item for aesthetic improvements in city parks. This goes with the, uh, the idea behind funding a court ordered nuisance abatement in a way that brings expedient relief to neighborhoods. We don't have line items for, to repair, uh, park benches, um, picnic tables. We do that, it, it's in a general operating expense line item, um, and so it's always budget dependent. Sometime we get to the end of the year and we don't have much money left in that, sometimes we have a little bit, and we're able to make those repairs. Now, we always repair broken items, but we don't always make repairs to stuff that just looks rundown. So this is ten thousand dollars for our parks, um, to make improvements, um, that hopefully, um, increase, uh, people's enjoyment while they're at, while they're, uh, using our parks. Revenue highlights, we did, uh, see a two point five percent increase in, uh, property valuation. These are nothing like the double-digit increases they're seeing in Johnson County, but for us, um, it's, it's a good sign. We were flat, if not negative, for many years, and we started to trickle up a little bit last year. Um, we're comfortable budgeting a two and a half percent increase, um, so the city's total valuation, uh, went up to two hundred, about two hundred and twelve million dollars. The general fund sales tax revenues are up about three and a half percent. Um, general fund, that brings in about two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. That brings much more than that in, in total sales tax, but some of that's diverted to the CIP, some of that is, uh, given to rebate such as Home Depot, they get their sales tax back for these incentives that we've created over the years, but it brings about two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars into the general fund. Uh, franchise fees, uh, slight increase in that, slight increase in, uh, motor vehicle. Unfortunately, we continue to see a decline in court fines and fees. Um, we are down, uh, to about, I think the budget this year is six hundred and seventy-five thousand, uh, dollars, which is, um, considerably down. Uh, you can speak with the police chief tomorrow. Um, currently, we're eight officers short, um, those are patrol officers, and we don't have the manpower to take patrol off for, uh, traffic in a lot of cases. We hit the high times, um, but as, as far as, uh, all-day-long traffic enforcement, that's really suffered with the amount of officers we've been short over the last five years. Uh, I included this last year, uh, I thought it was a valuable slide. Where does the city's general fund receive its, its revenue? Um, forty-six percent is sales tax. Um, you'd think that property tax would, would be what runs the city, but it's really sales tax on the general fund side. Then you get into a little bit smaller, property taxes and franchise fees, each about that sixteen to nineteen mark, and then there's, uh, just a number of other license and permit fees, some minimum governmental transfers, um, charges for service, those would include, uh, um, stuff that, anything that we charge, uh, city residents for.
Are those figures actually for the, the proposed figures for the two thousand nineteen budget?
Yes, and that, these are general fund dollars.
Right.
So then, this is, the expenditures by function, so where does the, all the general fund money go? Uh, the police department is forty percent of our operating budget. It takes forty percent of the total amount of general fund revenue we have to run the police department. It takes twenty-five percent of our total revenue to run the fire department. So right off the top, sixty-five percent of our budget goes to public safety. Uh, public works is another large chunk at thirteen percent. Um, culture and recreation is really parks, recreation, the, a river, the, um, the playhouse, uh, any money that we, uh, give anywhere else, uh, for small grants. General administration is, is my office, the city commission, finance, HR, IT, city clerks, um, so that's about eighteen percent of the general fund budget. Expense highlights, the Riverfront Community Center is a jewel of the community, but it, it requires a large subsidized, subsidization every year. This year, for twenty thou, twenty nineteen, it will require about four hundred thousand dollars of general fund money, um, in addition to the levy, the recreation has its own specific levy, um, to operate, um, the Riverfront Community Center and our recreation programs. Those programs never make money, and they very rarely break even, um, but they continue to soak up a lot of general fund revenue. The inclusion of the sixty thousand dollars, that's the mid-year salary and benefits for community development director. Uh, sixty thousand dollars is the state mandated increase for capers and KPNF, that's our police and fire pension, those are numbers we get from the state and have to budget, we don't have any flexibility on that. Health insurance, um, we're staying in the single digits, we've had, uh, a good experience a year, um, a lot of municipalities and even, you know, the, the insurance world in, in general is in double-digit increases, we're able to get it to eight percent. That's not finalized yet, but our, our pledge to the commission always is if it comes in at ten or eleven, we will make plan design changes that get it to eight, um, which just means more of the burden falls to the employee, or the, they just take a lesser, uh, coverage. So eight percent is what is included in this budget. The introduction of fire department specialty assignment pay, um, over the last couple years, the police department has benefited from, um, some enhancements to their budget. Uh, we did a step system, uh, for police officers, uh, three years ago, and then last year, we started a specialty assignment pay for police officers where if you s, serve on the SWAT team, um, with the specialized training that's required to that, you get a hundred dollars extra a month specialty pay. If you are a field training officer, um, also a hundred dollars. Now, if you do two, your second one's capped at fifty dollars, and that's all you can get, even if you serve on a third or fourth or a fifth. Um, we had not done anything for the fire department. Recognizing that, um, there is, uh, extensive training, um, and exercise, uh, and personal initiative to be hazmat certified and be on that hazmat team, we introduced, uh, a ten-member hazmat team with a team lead, um, and members of that hazmat team, uh, will , uh, receive a hundred dollars a month for that specialty pay. We do, um, have training requirements, it's, it's a detailed program, you have to have certain certifications to be on that team, you can't just be named to the team, you have to meet the, the requirements of the team to receive that pay. We're a member of the Mid-America Regional Council's hazmat response team, and our, our fire chief can talk about that more, so we do a lot of regional training at the Speedway, uh, we respond and mutual aid with a lot of, um, other jurisdictions around the area. That also includes the assignment pay that we also included for three investigators. We have a fire marshal who does, um, who's our, uh, primary investigator, um, but we're gonna have a position for three other firefighters to begin the training, uh, investigation training, so when they're the first on scene, they can, uh, start to triage the scene, uh, and work with the fire marshal on investigations. So that costs us thirteen thousand two hundred dollars annually. Increasing the legal budget by fifty thousand dollars, um, that budget had been static for about fifteen years, and it does not reflect, um, the level that a city of our size should be paying for legal services, um, so we needed to increase that. And then, of course, the county now charges the full day for all inmates at the jail, um, so it's about, it's about fifty thousand dollars. And again, we were, uh, fully receptive of that change and don't think it's unreasonable.
Okay.
Employee compensation, as I mentioned, we went, uh, we had a three percent mid-year increase last year across the board, we've de, decreased that to two point seven five percent, and then set aside a hundred thousand dollars for probably phase one of the implementation of a soon-to-be classification and compensation study. I don't know what the cost of that, the study would be, um, a large number of cities in the, in the region are doing those right now, um, so once we get the results of that, I'll share that with the commission on what those turn out to be. So, uh, in conclusion, the two thousand nineteen recommended operating budget reflects the continuation of modest yet positive growth in revenue and service delivery. The recommended budget proposes to invest further in employee development, workforce stabilization, while making small enhancements in public works, flight removal, parks and recreation with completely fat city-funded mill rate. Additionally, revenue trends and careful consideration of expenses of previous years has allowed the city to sustain pre-recession reserve levels. We are well above our target, which is sixteen percent, that's very important for the city's bond rating, um, so we remain, uh, fiscally stable with our reserve position, um, not in a level that, um, is exorbitant in any means, but a level that's prudent when looking at, um, a city that issues debt and relies on our bond rating. Um, so, uh, again, starting tomorrow at one o'clock in this room, open to the public, it'll be televised but not aired live, it'll be aired, um, aired later, it'll be our, our hearings. It'll be aired, aired later will be our, our hearings. Questions tonight on anything? Otherwise, we'll, we'll start tomorrow.
Yes, good, thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Kramer?
Thank you.
Can you take any questions from out here?
Sure, sir. Go up to the lectern and state your address.
Yeah, name is John Hall, thirty-fourteen Shrine Park. I've not been able to find out, that's why I came down to ask, okay, you guys in the city here have a mill rate, you know, property tax you charge, no problem. The county also has it. What I'm seeing from the outside is there's a replication of services here between the county and the city. Both are charging some for the same thing. Is, is there somewhere, is, is, are you guys separate or?
County and the city are two separate entities, the two separate taxing entities. You pay more to the county, you pay, if you live in the city and obviously you do a thirty-fourteen Shrine Park road. You, more of your property, you pay more property tax to the county of what more than you pay for the city of what more.
Oh, absolutely.
And that goes to sheriff's department, roads in the county, whatever else. There's very little what the county does in the city or what the city does in the county. In fact, there's nothing the city does in the county. When I say nothing, virtually nothing, that.
Yeah, I mean, we have a few mutual aid stuff, but we don't provide any services outside the city limits.
No, no, that was the thing, 'cause I was not able to find out if there was any replication other than if you had a mutual agreement. And that's why I wanted, just wanted to ask about it.
The sheriff, the sheriff's department does have, I don't wanna say jurisdiction in the city, but they, if you're driving down the road at eighty miles an hour, there's not a city PD car, but if the sheriff happens to drive by and you're in the city, they can nail you. And, and there's some other things that the county, the sheriff does, but for the most part, your county sales tax is for the county, supports the county.
Right.
And there might be a few things the city's involved in, but, uh, they're two separate entities. And then you have the school district, which is a third entity and they're the largest taxing entity of the three.
Well, that answers my question. That's actually less than I thought it was. You should, you should raise it.
Need to run for commissioning. And make that your platform.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Anything else? Any other questions for Mr. Kramer? If not, we'll move on to the presentation of Business Park Research and Marketing Plan from Zimmer Group.
Mr. Mayor, in commission, in anticipation of the opening of the Leavenworth Business and Technology Park, Assistant City Manager Taylor Tetter and I, along with Steve Jack at LCDC, decided that we probably needed a research report and recommendations from a established leader in the industry. I spoke to the commission a few times about this. We hired Newmark Grub Zimmer to do the report for us. The mayor, Mr. Tetter and I had met with him with a draft copy and they sent their final draft in this week or their final plan. So, I wanted to just share a few highlights with you. Really, where you wanna start and where I'll start tonight, and we'll go through the whole thing, is page fifty-one. The first fifty pages, we wanted to get a feel for what our competition was. What are, what, not only what was out there from parks, but what they're offering. And then, also, the feel for the activity in the market. What's hot right now, what's not, what's landed, who landed what. So, the first fifty pages, what is an extensive research report on what's been going on, who are our competitors and what are some deals that have been made in the metro. So, we're gonna share this information with LCDC. We're gonna share it with really anybody who wants it to help us be successful in the parks. So, what I wanted to talk about tonight is some specific recommendations that they've made, starting on page fifty-one, when they, where they titled it Offering Profile. They made a recommendation to essentially not individually parcel the park to make it one big lot, not realizing that we had already done that. So, that made me feel good that the decision that LCDC and the city made to essentially be able to customize size of, of property was the right one. So, I wanna point you to the incentives part. And this was a little bit eye-opening when we met with them, where this ended up halfway through that first paragraph where they say, "In order to be competitive, the schedule should call for a property tax abatement of one hundred percent for ten years on any new building in excess of fifteen thousand square feet." So, new buildings less than fifteen thousand square feet should receive a property tax abatement of fifty percent for ten years. That's what the market is. When, when we hear a lot of times citizens or people from other organizations talking about the city being overly generous, this is where we are in the market and this is why we had them do this study. This is an established commercial development firm telling you this is what the market requires right now. So, that was something interesting. Additionally, the next paragraph starts off with, "Many of the competitive parks outside the immediate Kansas City area have employed additional incentives beyond property tax." So, we could be talking about industrial revenue bonds. We could be talking about cash payments for employment numbers like we did with CPAC. We could be talking about a whole host of incentives that position us in the market to land some of these clients. Just something to, to prepare the commission and the public for as we move forward. Utilities should ensure that water, gas, this is the next page, water, gas, electric, sewer are all installed newly constructed. We nailed this one. We, we wanted a shovel-ready, fully ready-to-go business park on day one and we have this. Our utilities are in place, everything's in place. So, I was happy with where we stood on this issue. Civil engineering, city should provide samples of composition of soils, alt surveys, topography maps. We have all of that data. This was part of the deliverables we required from JMK. We're gonna have to accumulate it and put it into an easy-to-read, couple-page document we can hand out to developers, but we have all this data. So, we're working on this now. This is nothing that now we'll have to go out and, and pay somebody to do. We, we have to just compile what we have. The Leavenworth Business Technology Park Owners Association, this would be similar to a homeowner's association where you would sign up. Again, this was a deliverable that we required from JMK. Mr. Waters has been working on that and I believe it's about finalized. So, as people, as tenants come to the business park and sign up, they will start to assume ownership, some ownership of the common grounds of the detention facility. So, the city won't be on the hook forever maintaining this park. It'll be part of the Business Owners Association to keep the park looking good and viable for years. A marketing plan. I'll head back to pricing in a minute. A marketing plan. The staff will aid in marketing efforts of the Business and Technology Park by being present on property tours, answering development process, infrastructure questions from prospective users. We're gonna start this tomorrow. Taylor will be a little late to budget hearings because he is meeting with the lead from Project Trigger, which the city of Leavenworth is shortlisted on for the new Business and Technology Park. I would've been there, probably would've requested, the mayor's been there, we've communicated with the, to that, to them that, that Taylor would be there. And I think that's a good step, that we have somebody with the city at every major site visit proposal. So, we're gonna be making sure we do that going forward. LCDC, working closely with LCDC. Zimmer sings the praises of the work that LCDC does and what they can do and the connections that they have and they continue a strong relationship with LCDC. So, this commission's always been very supportive of LCDC as staff worked well, so we continue to, to look there. Maybe the most notable item in here that we haven't done yet is retaining a brokerage firm. That's essentially hiring a commercial realtor. So, that's above LCDC and KCADC and Department of Commerce sending us leads and us responding. This is hiring a commercial broker who will go out on our behalf and proactively solicit development or projects, who knows the market, who may know stuff that's coming, who would be our face out there. They would be paid based on commission and, and the mayor asked a good question in the meeting. If we give the land away, how does the broker get paid? You get paid on the market value of the land, so you still get your six percent on the market value of the land, but you're buying the service or you're buying the representation. So, Taylor and I have gathered a list of what we believe are the leaders in the Kansas City area and these firms and we're gonna interview some firms and probably move forward with signing along with a commercial realtor to do everything we can to fill that park. One other thing that I, that I wanted to hit on that was back, make sure I got everything in, in this part. Oh, and the marketing plan. I, I've mentioned in my weekly reports a couple of times that LCDC has engaged a marketing firm. They're, they plan to spend somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred to a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to do a county-intensive marketing focusing on the Leavenworth and Tonganoxi business parks. And they are a good firm who did a good presentation. So, whenever they're done with their initial plan and offerings, we'll show that to the commission, but we're gonna be very involved in that marketing plan. So, I think that will help. I've offered to Steve Jack that if there's anything within that that we can supplement to please let us know, any specialized material we can get for our business park as an add-on to please let us know. They mentioned property condition on page fifty-nine. The park looks pristine right now, but it's very important that it remains that way for curb appeal, for visits. They indicated a lot of times, commercial developers may come to your park without your knowledge and drive around and look at it. Taylor and I are meeting with, on-site with a company early next week to sign up a maintenance agreement with them to keep it professionally maintained at a high level and make it look like it did the day that it opened continually. Signage, I think we, we covered that. They happened to see our sign the day they came up and were very impressed with how it looked and the, the image that it gave off for the city of Leavenworth. They did mention maybe potentially the development of a logo, which we don't really have right now. We looked at some designs on the sign that I don't think anybody was real happy with, but that could be something that we work with the firm that LCDC's hired as maybe a supplement to their contract, the development, potentially of a logo that we could put on this branded material that shows the soil composition or the land price, you know, or marketing material to, to develop a logo for us. So, I'm gonna talk to them about doing that. The pricing, they, they recommend a dollar a square foot. So, that's, that's where we're gonna start, when we start with these early projects. Of course, we'll get much more nuanced feedback from any commercial realtor that we hire about if that's the right level or not. So, that was just, this in a nutshell, I've, I've given it to the commission. It's available to the public. There's nothing in it, it's just recommendations for the city to do. And we plan on using this going forward. So, if there's any questions on the plan or what we got out of it, our next steps.
Is Newmark Grub, are they finished or do they help with the implementation?
This is their final deliverable.
This is the final?
Yes.
Okay.
They're certainly available for other services, should we ensure to do a second contract. But this is their deliverable.
Any other questions for Mr. Kramer?
Park really does look beautiful, by the way. Very nice.
Okay, next is the consent agenda. Before I make the consent motion, just two most, two of the most significant expenditures just for the education of the public. Harbor construction for two-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand dollars for this particular report, which comes at the beginning, the first meeting we have in a particular month. And that was for the Granite Seal project that, that's going on at the city. So, I just wanted to relate that. And then, and we have a monthly, monthly claim and expenditure for health insurance for the employees of the city. That's the United Healthcare and that was in the amount of two-hundred-and-ninety thousand for the month of July. So, having said that, I will make a motion to approve the claims for June twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen through July sixth, two thousand and eighteen, in the amount of one million, four-hundred-and-fourteen thousand, five-hundred-and-forty-two dollars and thirty-four cents. Then, amount for pay number fourteen, effective July sixth, two thousand and eighteen, in the amount of three-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars and fifty-six cents. No police and fire pension.
Second.
Motion second to approve the consent agenda is presented. Begin voting, Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 Passes five-zero. We have a need for an executive session. Before we go into an executive session, let's take comments from commissioners. Commissioner Bowder?
Uh, no comments tonight.
Commissioner Dettler? Commissioner Griswold?
About a month ago, I mentioned, I don't think Larry was here, but for, for my fellow commissioners, I mentioned a request that we have a study session for looking at infrastructure and specifically roads. Now, I know a big part of that is the money picture, but I think there's some other things about just what's happening within the city with respect to roads that I would still like to discuss. I understand that we haven't put something on the calendar yet and I would like to get my fellow commissioners to agree to a study session to focus on roads sometime in the month of August, put it on the calendar.
I think we'll be discussing, we're gonna be, we're gonna be discussing quite a bit on roads, not necessarily quite a bit, but we're gonna be discussing roads the next couple days, are we not?
I mean, there's, anything's fair game on the budget.
Let's discuss that, but I, but I'm, I'm not against that, but I think that we're gonna have some of that discussion over the next couple of days to, yeah.
We support what?
Yeah, I support it. We actually do a study session.
Yeah, I'd like, I mean, I, 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 I think there will be some questions that come up, but I'm not gonna have, I, I just, I know that I'm not gonna ask some of the questions that I have in the next few days about, 'cause I think they're too specific.
Okay, okay. Now, we do have a study session on.
The appearance and the.
Experience, that, uh, that's next week, that's next week's study, but you're looking for one on roads specifically.
Yes.
I'd support it. So, are we, just to get a little clarification, what I, what I'm hearing maybe, and I may not be hearing wrong, funding and methods, is that, I mean, 'cause those are, there's, there's everything from what type of road repair you do to funding and those become large topics.
Right.
And there's even more. So, what, we wanna talk about stuff that's funded, the methods we use.
Yes, those are the.
We talked about it in August.
And priorities, I think priorities.
Yeah. And we talked about it in August, obviously, we can't talk about any, you know, we've got the basket of money 'cause the budget's going to be set. And I think, you know, we can't, we can say Zupikaboo, not Iowa or something like that, but, uh, I don't know, we, we can't add money to it 'cause the budget will be set.
So, you can redirect CIP money, but new revenue for general obligation bonds, which is just a portion, but it's the thing, would have to be done during this budget, even though we don't program it till the CIP, because that would, that would, that would require a millage rate increase.
Yeah, I understand.
But, but you can divert CIP dollars from other things in the fall. You don't have to do that now.
Right.
For, for road projects.
Okay, well, yeah, there's a consensus that we didn't discuss this in August and, and but I agree that, that something is going, we'll discuss part of that obviously in the next couple of days, but we'll also.
I mean, if you have a lot of stuff already that we're dealing with on, I mean, you've got the agenda, I don't have the agenda for the year, Mark, but the, you know, if there's already a lot of other stuff that we're discussing, we can do this later, but, you know, we need to.
Yeah, well, well, Ms. Kramer and I'll look at the calendar and see what we've got.
I have the calendar, it's just on tablet.
Yeah, yeah.
If you got, yeah, if you got a lot of stuff that you might wanna.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Griswold? Mr. Wilson? I, I have nothing and we have a need for an executive session is, are consultants here?
We don't need it. It'll be just myself, Mr. Waters and Mr. Tetter.
Okay. How long do we need?
Ten minutes should be sufficient.
I move that we go into executive session for preliminary discussion of the acquisition of real property, exception for KSA seven-five-four-three-one-nine-B six. Anything, oh, to return here, what time did you say?
Eight-eighteen.
Eight-eighteen.
And mention who's gonna be in there.
And, and joining us will be the city manager, Paul Kramer, and our seat attorney, Mr. Waters.
Assistant city manager.
Assistant city manager, Taylor Tetter.
I'll second it.
Will there, Mr. Kramer, will there be any action after this?
No.
There'll be no action. Motion second, go into executive session, return to this room at eight-eighteen. By that clock, begin voting, Mr. Griswold?
Aye.
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 Passes five-zero.
[Music]